Yes. Okay, I'd like to open the school committee meeting. I have six o'clock. Could we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Here.
David Florio.
Yeah.
Donna Kalunian.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Here.
Don Cowart.
Here.
Mr. Sands, I don't see you. All right, could we have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to go into executive session.
Second the motion. And could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Kalunian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Great, motion carries five to zero, so we will see the public back in about 10 minutes. I'll meet you all in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recording, Mr. Murphy, oh, you're recording, yeah. Good evening, everyone, I'd like to reconvene the open meeting of the Coventry School Committee. I have 6:14. And if we could have a moment of silence while we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you, everyone. And I believe, Mr. Florio, if you could do the honor of reading the mission statement for Coventry Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students. An inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. And just to report out to the public, the school committee met for about 10 minutes in executive session, and we had two votes. We approved the executive session minutes from 4:29:21. The vote was five to zero, and we also approved the homeschooling requests by five to zero. That being said, could I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session? I mean, seal the minutes, yeah.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session be closed pursuant to Sections 42-46-4 and 42-46-5.
I second the motion. Thank you, Mrs. Kalunian, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Kalunian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to approval of the minutes from 4:121 and 4:29:21. Zero motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of 4:121 and 4:29:21 as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Kalunian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five to zero. Moving on into the public agenda for the attendees gathered. All the remaining agenda items are open to the public. If you have any questions or comments, you may speak to each of our agenda items after a motion's made. Before I call for the vote, you will be asked to comment. So that being said, we can move on to agenda item number six, which is the celebration. The Coventry High School State Champion Cheerleaders. I believe we have Mrs. Lolita Roberts here. Mr. Levis, did you want to start it and turn it over to her?
Yes, we have Mrs. Roberts here. She is the coach of our cheerleading team, our competitive cheerleaders. And we had invited, I don't know, Ms. Roberts, if the captain to here, we had sent them a link, we have.
Yep, they're here with me, where we just.
Okay, all right.
The baseball team just beat Hunderkin five to zero, and we were here cheering them up.
Yeah, we wanted to, it's impossible with virtual to have the number of cheerleaders on the screen. I mean, hopefully, when we do get back into person, you know, we can come back into some of these celebrations. I remember when we've had a lot of the teams come before the committee and be able to give out certificates. But not only was this a state champion this year, but it's a second year in a row. So nobody can describe what their experience has been like, Ms. Roberts. So I just want to turn it over to you and thank you, and thank you for the tri captains for coming tonight.
Yay, well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you giving us some recognition for our hard work. It's been a difficult year. We started back in July, thought we could at least cheer for soccer, and then that didn't happen just due to numbers. Again, in December, got our gear ready and our routines ready. We're excited to, you know, help out with the football team. We also started our unified cheerleading team last year, and so we are here to support all of our unified teams as well. And then, you know, we get, finally, we got the chance to compete, thankfully, to Mrs. Maycumber, who allowed us to compete last year for the first time in 14 years. And so this group of girls have really persevered through so much. And for them to win back-to-back state championships was just icing on the cake. I do have my three captains, Sierra Vizi, Faith Parton, and Anna Fuentes here with me. And Anna did want to say a few words just about being part of the team. So here's Anna Fuentes, and she is continuing on to cheer at URI this year, Division One. And they were national champions last year. So here we go, Anna.
Hi, so I would just like to talk on behalf of all the cheerleaders at Coventry High School. And we would like to say thank you and amazing program. We were able to get back to practices and work new skills and pick up right where we left off. And even during COVID, we pushed through these tough times and worked as a team, so we were ready for competition. And to be a cheerleader at Coventry High School, it means we're given many opportunities, not just for the school, but for the community as well. We were able to cheer at many sporting events during school and even going to elementary schools and middle schools and showcasing what a great program Coventry High School cheerleading is. We all look forward to going to our sports and clubs after a long day of school. And speaking for the cheerleaders, we love to all be together and bond and work new skills to improve our cheerleading. And we would like to thank our coaches, Lolita Roberts, Erica Flynn, and Missy Kelly. This program would definitely not be where it is today without their amazing coaching and help from them. So thank you to the coaches and also our parents for the support throughout our cheer season. And we would like to give one last final thank you to Ms. Maycumber for recognizing us for our hard work and allowing us to compete. So thank you.
Great job, Anna. So that was our captain, Anna. We really appreciate you recognizing us tonight. So thank you so much, Mr. Levis, for including us in the meeting.
Thank you for all your hard work. And just, I saw, you know, at the football game the other night, just, you know, so impressed with, you know, for a moment there, I forgot we're in a pandemic, you know? It's nice to see young adults being young adults. And thank you for everything that you've done and for how proud you've made this community. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm just going to go around the school committee to let them have their comments. So, Mr. Florio, comments from you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I am so proud of our cheerleaders. And Don, you make us look good. You really do. When we took a risk and it has paid off. We've had, you've done a marvelous job, and you really do. You make every member of our school committee very proud when you win these championships. And I appreciate it very much, and I know our school committee members do as well. So thank you, thank you, and you have a great evening, and let's go, let's go. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mrs. Kalunian.
Do you want to do Luke first?
Yeah, I forgot. Yeah, Mr. Murray, you're going to feel like you're out of place here. So, yeah, I got distracted because I hit a button, and I was like, who do I call next? And, okay, so, Mr. Murray.
No, that's all right, I'll be brief. I was also at the football game, saw the performance, and actually, my brother commented, he said, can you believe this isn't considered a sport? It's competitive cheerleading, right? And we've talked about this before, even when we fundraised earlier in the year, and it's true. It is truly a sport. I saw the cheerleaders flying in the air and the amount of athleticism involved. And it always amazes me, I couldn't do any of it regarding how athletic I've ever been. So I appreciate all the efforts. As Mr. Levis said, you know, it's hard to believe we're in a pandemic now, seeing state champion football. You know, softball came out strong, seeing the cheerleaders thrive. It certainly takes our mind off of the current times, and I appreciate it. And hopefully, we can continue to support in any way we can, but thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you again, that those comments go so far for us. We really strive to be the best athletes that we can, and hopefully, someday, we will be considered a sport here. But in our minds, we know we are a sport.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Kalunian.
Yes, and Lolita, I do believe it is a sport also, because I remember those days so well, way back. And it really is a lot of hard work. And the work that you guys put into it, and, you know, it shows. That's the main thing, it shows, and you should be proud of all your accomplishments, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalunian, Mr. Pearson.
Congratulations to the students and coaches. Your hard work is definitely paying off, and you're making the community proud. So thank you, and we hope this, we hope you continue these good efforts moving forward. So thank you very much, and congratulations to all.
Thanks again, we love these compliments. We're really excited to be here and be part of the school committee meeting tonight. So I appreciate all your comments.
And finally, I just, it's an honor to have you here tonight. I say this every time we have a celebration, that this is one of the favorite things that we do. I want all of your cheerleaders to know, the coaches, you, that we are so proud of you. And I concur with the rest of my committee that, you know, cheerleading is an athletic sport. I don't think you could be more athletic. Sometimes when I go and I watch, I, you know, my heart's in my, I have a hole in my stomach, and I'm like nervous that someone's going to fall. I don't know how they do what they do, but there's a lot of trust that's there as well. So the fact that, you know, the kids on the bottom that are catching their classmates, it's pretty amazing that the trust is so great. So there's so many things that goes on in cheerleading, and it's not just, you know, a simple, like, rah rah rah, you guys, you know, are dancers, you're, you know, gymnasts, it's just amazing. And so I know I can speak for this committee as well as the whole school community that you are very, very much appreciated. And the fact that you've had back-to-back championships, what more could we ask for? You guys are awesome.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Patnood, we really appreciate all those comments. It's, we're sitting here together, and we're just amazed that other people are feeling this way about us. And we appreciate all of that feedback. It makes us do what we do proudly. And representing our school and our community is number one, and it always has been. So we'll continue to do so.
And your student who made her comments, I'm sorry, I forget her name, but she did an excellent job. I kept waiting for her, and she just kept, she rolled everybody and thanked everyone. She didn't forget anyone. And, you know, sometimes, you know, kids forget to thank their parents. So I was really, really heartened by her comments. So thank you so much for all you do and for being appreciative to the people that helped you get there too as well. So again, thank you for being here, and, you know, you guys can leave. Oh, actually, don't leave yet, because there might be someone from the audience that might want to say something. So I'm going to ask anybody in the public, are there any attendees that would like to raise their hand? And we have someone. So, Mr. Murphy, if you could bring them in.
Sure. Melissa, you're up, if you could just unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Melissa Lepus, 75, Highwood Drive. I would just like to say, I'm a track coach in the Rhode Island Interscholastic League, and they actually, Rhode Island Interscholastic League considers Coventry cheerleading, rather, just cheerleading in general, a sport. They are part of the Rhode Island Interscholastic League. I think it's just that needs to be changed in the contract in Coventry, that Coventry recognizes it as a sport.
Well, thank you for that, Melissa. Anybody else, attendees, that would like to speak?
Looks like that's the last one.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay, well, you guys can all go, and our students can go home and do their homework.
Yes, again, ready for the AP exams for tomorrow.
Oh, boy, well, okay, well, thank you so much for coming, we really appreciate it.
Okay, take care. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we can move on to agenda item number seven, which is the school calendar revision for 2122. Mr. Levis, did you want to talk about that? I know it was in our packet.
Mr. Cowart to talk about, we're bringing it forward because there's a couple of changes that we want to get the, make the community aware, but also get it approved by the school committee. So I don't know, Mr. Murphy, if you could pull that up. And while that's happening, Mr. Cowart, if you wanted to highlight a couple of the changes that we're asking approval for tonight.
Yes, I'll be brief. So after we presented this to the school committee at a previous meeting, afterwards, we identified two types of graphical errors. One was a duplication of a date. If you look at, I guess it's September, after September 30th, there's an empty box. And for some reason, a number carried over, which threw our number off a little bit. It didn't throw off the count for the last day of school, but it was confusing people, and I identified that we had carried an extra number. And then in May, on the 17th, for some reason, I had typed in the 19th. So it was just two typos that I fixed. Those were simple, and I appreciate the people who identified them and brought them forward to me. And then the only other thing, which is a little bit more significant, is the preschool program, the state pre-Ks have mandatory parent-teacher conferences. And at this time, the conferences are not in our contract with our teachers. So Mrs. Aaronakis and Mrs. Ahern worked together with their teachers, the preschool teachers, and were able to come up with an agreement to put in three parent-teacher conference days. So those have been added in for pre-K. One is in December, one is in March, and one is in May. And those are half-days of school, excuse me, not May, June, pardon me, those are half-days of school. And that's it. The last day of school still stands at the 10th, the first day of school still stands at the 30th. Everything else pretty much stayed the same.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cowart. Are there any questions for Mr. Cowart? Mr. Florio?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
No, Madam Chair, I'm good.
Okay, Mrs. Kalunian.
I have no questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pearson.
No questions, thank you.
All right, are we ready to move on this?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school calendars presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Are there any questions from the citizens gathered?
If we have any.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Kalunian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to number eight, personnel discussion and vote, certified layoffs. We have a new reference, I believe, Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this at all?
Yes, we, I had also submitted as part of your packet enrollment numbers, and we have identified eight classes at the elementary level. We've also identified enrollment numbers where we were able to make some reductions at the high school level. And these layoffs are based on enrollment. So we know that a couple of things just about enrollment, we're making these, recommending these layoffs tonight because, again, we know that we have to notify our educators by June 1st. We have one more meeting. But I want to be cautious about numbers, that we have a maximum of 22 to 23 students, K to 2, 25, grade 3 to 5, and it's 27, 28 at the secondary level. And we're pretty tight, but we need to do this in terms of our flexibility. And we had 16 individuals receive the resignation tonight. That brings the list down to 15. But we also have to caution that as enrollment, and, you know, Mr. Cowart and I had a conversation, he's here tonight also if you have questions. We know that our kindergarten enrollment will expand this summer. We also believe that we'll have greater enrollment in some of our elementary classrooms. We also know that we have an additional approximately 90, some odd, 92 or 3 homeschool students that we're not sure, you know, just in conversations during the year with families, that many had indicated that they would come back, but many have not registered. So I just want to caution that, you know, for these programs, we may be having to come back before the committee to put classrooms on. We also know that we have positions that we're going to prove that for next year, and then we've had different funding sources. We've identified the funding source from ESER II and the American Recovery Plan. And in some of those positions, we want to post and fill, because that'll allow, if, you know, teachers take those positions, it'll free up some opportunity for teachers, not only for if we have to add to enrollment purposes, but also opportunity for these teachers to come back. And we want to do that before we have our job fair, which I think is June 15th, if I'm correct. So, but these are the, these are the people that have been impacted. You know, we know this is a tough time, any time's a tough time, but especially during a pandemic. But these are the individuals that we're going to be identifying shortly that have been impacted by these reductions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Levis. I'm just going to go around, if anybody has any questions about the enrollments, which was our reference number four, before we actually motion for the layoffs. Mr. Florio, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Kalunian. I keep doing that.
No questions.
Mr. Murray.
Sorry, no questions.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Pearson.
No questions.
All right, thank you so much. Are we ready to motion on our certified layoffs?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent that the following individuals, following personnel be laid off at the conclusion of the 2020-2021 school year and be confirmed due to factors identified in individual reference letters, which include but are not limited to enrollment reductions, teachers returning from leaves of absences and/or returning from job share, possible loss of grant funds, fiscal constraints, and program changes. And following individuals are the ones being laid off. Sarah Blessing, 1.0 school nurse, Feinstein Middle School, effective date 6/30/2021. Lauren Serra, 1.0 K to 2 inclusion teacher, Tyog Elementary School, effective date 6/30/2021. Stacy DeMello, 1.0 grade 4 teacher, Washington Oak Elementary School. Ashley Dudley, 1.0 intensive support score teacher, Black Rock Elementary School. Vanessa Equintani, 1.0 inclusion teacher at Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School. Bridget LaFerrier, .4 inclusion teacher at Tyog Elementary School. Kelly Lima, 1.0 state pre-kindergarten teacher, Washington Oak Elementary School, effective date 6/30/2021. Sarah Maderos, 1.0 grade 1 teacher, Hopkins Hill Elementary School. Cheryl McElroy, 1.0 math coach, Black Rock/Tyog Elementary Schools, effective date 6/30/2021. Molly O'Keefe, .6 social studies teacher, Coventry High School, effective date 6/30/2021. Jennifer Reynolds, 1.0 strive teacher, Western Coventry Elementary School, effective date 6/30/2021. Molly Rataco, one-year-only kindergarten teacher, Hopkins Hill Elementary School, effective date 6/30/2021. Kayla Jean Tibbetts, .6 math teacher, Feinstein, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, effective date 6/30/2021. Caitlin Valetta, 1.0 intensive support teacher, Allen Shawn Feinstein Middle School, effective date 6/30/2021. Jessica Viveros, 1.0 intensive support teacher, Tyog Elementary School, effective date 6/30/2021.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalunian, are there any comments or questions from the citizens gathered? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Kalunian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five to zero. Moving on to number nine, which is the school property disposition policy. The end, first reading, it was our reference number one. Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this, or perhaps turn it over to Mr. Pearson?
Sure, I'll just start, and Mr. Pearson, please feel free. I want to thank Mr. Pearson, we, Mr. Cowart came to me, we have a lot of textbooks that have been determined that they have no value, no use, but they're taking up a significant amount of space. So he asked me about, what's our policy around disposing property? I found a policy that was updated, I think, was it 1982? I think Mr. Pearson was the last update. So we had a great conversation, I know Dr. Dixon's in the audience. Just looking at what, you know, whose responsibility is it, is there's an order, and so, you know, I want to thank again the policy subcommittee, Mr. Clough, Mr. Pearson, Dr. Dixon, because I think we pulled together in a couple of meetings, a policy that's, you know, based on our attorneys, our legal counsel's interpretation of the law, and will allow us, give some guidance around the value of property, equipment, that's going, supplies that'll be, you know, either given away or sold if we could get some value. So again, I want to thank the subcommittee for their work, and, you know, Mr. Pearson, have you have something to add?
Yeah, it seems like, may seem like a minor policy on the surface, but we want to make sure that, you know, the responsibilities are clear between, you know, what the school is authorized to do to make sure that there's no ambiguity with, you know, town council authority over disposition of property, because per Title 16, we have care and control over our own assets. Assets. I think the only thing I'll add to that is. Sorry, Craig, I hate to do this. Make sure in the philosophy section, we properly cite the the Title sixteen statute. It needs the the section mark and it's missing the parentheses around. Section A eight. But other than that, you know, it's 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 pretty straightforward and and. And make sure, you know, we want to ensure that when we're disposing of excess stuff like textbooks or old furniture that we don't have a use for that. You know, the mechanism is clear and we can just do that. The administration can do that efficiently.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Levis. I agree. I I was very glad to see this particular policy. Mr. Florio, did you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I do have a question. So it says the superintendent shall develop procedures to implement managers policy, and I know that the school committee has to approve over five thousand. Well, I guess what my question is, you know, if we have anything of some higher value. Is there going to be an actual written policy that says over that certain amount in RFPs to be issued or? How that property is disposed of? As my question is, it's 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 a fairly broad policy and I understand that, but what what's the resultant of this policy? Be a little bit more specific down the line.
So just good question. There there's a and that question came up during the the policy development discussions. With the with our attorney, Sean Clough. I asked specifically, what is state law say around disposal of of assets like this? Is there a prescribed mechanism? Like, do we have to put things out to auction? Can it, you know, can we just sell them? The answer is there there isn't anything. Little surprised by that, especially living in Rhode Island, where I feel like I can't step out my front door without someone, you know, pointing a finger at me, saying I'm doing something wrong. It's a little of an exaggeration, but you know what I mean? There's a lot of regulation in the state, so I was a little surprised that 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 portion of it is not really regulated. So the fact that there's a five thousand dollar trigger for school committee approval. You know, is the opportunity to say, hey, maybe this should, you know, the school committee can help guide the superintendent at that point. As far as how to dispose of something, I don't I don't know if we want to. Put that in in a policy. We could explore that if there's an if there's a desire for it, but. Kind of left that open ended for now.
I appreciate the fact that you asked the question that there isn't anything in state law. I know most towns have sort of thresholds and limit they impose on themselves, but. I'm comfortable if you feel comfortable as the school committee representative that. If if you're you're okay with that five thousand trigger, I think you're right, you know, and obviously. Gives us some control if we feel like it's going down the wrong road. This this is something I'm I'm concerned about only because I actually have one particular example of the school district that. Suppose a property property improperly, or or maybe it was properly, but it was perceived as improper. So and we always have to be cognizant of that because obviously involves taxpayer money. In fact, this school district didn't dispose of it well at all and ended up, a lot of this property ended up in a dumpster, which people saw. And it was projectors and things that they thought they'd just throw out. And and people don't take kindly to that because they see that as dollars wasted. So I appreciate you tackling this and that's all.
Mr. Coward?
Just sort of an editorial comment, because we've been so tightly budgeted and and we have to. Use every resource until it's pretty much worn out. We don't have a lot of things that we're looking to dispose of that have a value over five thousand dollars. Almost everything we're looking to dispose of is has been well worn and used and used right through its its usable life and value.
We have a few vehicles we'd like to give away if we could just take them.
Take them, they're yours.
Box truck we have up on cinder blocks. I mean, come on, that's got to be.
We may have to pay.
No, but I think I think the the. And I know you're not always, you know, obviously not privy to the conversations, but when I say that. You know, the policy subcommittee doesn't rubber stamp anything, that that definitely was a conversation, but I think that's why. We bring it before the the school committee because there isn't going to be one protocol. It depends on, you know, we have something that has to be towed and get rid of and it's scrap, but you know, we get an idea that's worth more than five thousand. We'll come before the committee and say, hey, this is what we have, this is our plan, and I think we have a public conversation about it. So I think that, but you know, I'm comfortable the way the policy is written, that there'll be accountability at all levels.
Sounds fair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mrs. Colonian. You're on mute.
Yeah, I got it. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. I assume, Mr. Pearson, you don't have any questions?
Nothing further, nope.
I have one, and that is. Is there a possibility that anything that you might even donate to someone and or let someone buy? Is there a release form that would 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 go with that piece of item so that? The person could not come back and sue the district for, you know, let's say it was something electrical and it. Blew up and caused a fire in their house. I know that it, the only reason I even know anything about this is because obviously I run a lab at Brown and. You know, we we would always typically donate things that were sort of out of date. To local schools and providence. I've even donated things to Coventry before I was ever on school committee. And they basically kind of stopped the practice because our in order to do it, you have to jump through so many hoops concerning. Is this at all dangerous? Could it be ever perceived as dangerous and what would the liability be? So I just wanted to just throw that on the radar to make sure that I assume that you got, you know, anybody making the decision would. Take that in consideration, but I think there should maybe be a note about that somehow so that.
I'll ask Sean Clough, I can ask our attorney Sean and and I can ask, you know, Mr. Anderson also. You know, from a legal perspective, so I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so this is just a first reading. We're not approving the policy, so really, we're just going to dispense with the first reading, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense the first reading of the school property disposition policy DN.
I second the motion.
Do we have any comments or questions from the attendees gathered? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Martin?
Catherine Patnun?
Yes.
David Florio?
Yes.
Donna Colonian?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to number ten, which is the school building committee update. And I believe that is Mr. Murray, so you have the floor.
Yeah, so, you know, we're we're chugging along with the building effort. A lot of it's behind the scenes. We're pleased to announce, as you saw in your packet, that we did receive a letter from the the school building authority. Expressing their intent to make a recommendation to the council on elementary and secondary secondary education. That they would be moving forward our full request for eighty-nine million dollars. To for recommendation for approval. What that means is effectively, we would be eligible to receive. Reimbursement on that full request. We anticipated, quite honestly, getting cut. Most cities and towns do. We, quite frankly, went a little higher. Knowing we we needed to, but you know, you always try to value engineer in advance. We said, well, we're going at the higher number. Knowing we may have to value engineer the project. That doesn't seem to be the case. So what does that mean? It's likely we'll get fifty-seven point eight percent reimbursement commitment. There are forty-two point eight percent base plus another fifteen percent bonus. Which is substantial, especially if you look at other school districts throughout Rhode Island and what they're getting for reimbursements. I would say that we're on the very high end. Especially not being an urban district. Urban districts, as everyone knows, gets much higher housing aid. There's reasons for that, but. Most of the communities like Coventry, North Kingston, East Greenwich, et cetera, et cetera, aren't eligible for that type of housing aid. Many communities are at thirty-five percent. So it's exciting. We'll see what comes after the recommendation. And if the council does approve that, we'll get a follow-up letter with a firm commitment. We are working in the background with the leadership team to discuss with the town, leadership team of the town council. And the town manager and all the leadership from both administrations, how we move forward with this. We only have a couple of months till we have to get enabling legislation passed. Through the House to enable any potential bond if we're going to move forward. It's going to eventually be a council decision. And so that's why we're having thoughtful discussions in the background on this, because it is a big financial decision for the town, even just to bring it to a vote. And then it's going to be on the taxpayers to certainly come out and decide whether they want to move this forward. So there's going to be a lot to come in the next few weeks. Stay tuned. And, you know, if if we do move forward on it, I expect a rigorous communications campaign to let everybody know all the great work we've done. For the past couple of years and also let everybody know about the the benefits of this project. Was not only the fact that we take care of a lot of deferred capital needs that are on our list, which we saw the list a few weeks ago. It's quite extensive, right? So we clear out a lot of that, but the fact that we can get reimbursed for a large part of that now. Is a significant benefit. May not be the best timing, but is a substantial benefit that I think needs to be considered. Right now and not waited on. If we do this another five years from now, it is very likely we will not get. Anything close to the amount of reimbursement in the deal that we're going to get right now. So does anybody have any questions? All right, well, then I will leave it at that.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Murray. All right. Are there any questions from the attendees?
No hands are up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Then I guess we can move on to the superintendent's report, number eleven. Mr. Levis?
Yes, I'm I'm going to start off with the vaccination clinics for students. Age twelve to fifteen, we've been working with the Coventry EMA as well as Exeter EMA. Phil Nebraska, who's the EMA director with Chief Rick Heiss and and Chief Frank Brown from the Hopkins Hill and Central Coventry. They've been phenomenal. You know, we had a clinic for. For our sixteen and older and then, you know, they did a great job with that, including our own personnel that were supporting that. But we're pleased to offer an opportunity for our twelve to fifteen-year-olds, so we reached out to middle school. And we reached out to the high school individuals. And in in less than a day, we had over three hundred individuals that were interested. We also reached out to Father John V. Doyle. And they have individuals that'll be participating. So we just sent the link out today. The dates are going to be May twenty-first from four to eight P M. At our high school and then the second one, I believe, is June eleventh. And it'll be four to eight P M. And, you know, many of our staff support the process. With this age group, parents have to consent, so we that's why the four to eight P M. But again, we've had a a quick response and we just shared the link out again today, so people will be able to register. And, you know, again, I think it's a great opportunity for those that that choose to get the vaccine. In in our community that we're able to do it in in schools. I think schools are a a great setting. People are comfortable in schools. And again, so I just want to, I think, you know, share that with the community, with the committee. And again, I appreciate your support and the support of this community in in allowing us to to be part of this. So I don't know if there's any questions about that from anybody? Okay. The second one was. Just has to do with the town council recommendations. I've been meeting Mr. Sands. You know, we've continued to meet with the town manager and. Mr. Marshawn, the town finance director, Ms. Mills. And, you know, we, you know, we know this is a challenging time. I think Mr. Marshawn's finishing up his sixth week. And, you know, I I have faith that. You know, Monday night that they'll put forward a budget that. You know, and I I don't know if it'll be everything we've asked for, but in our conversations, I believe that they truly will put forward a budget that will be able to. You know, accomplish what we need to accomplish next year, but Monday night they are putting the budget forward. Mr. Marshawn will make recommendation. I know the council will vote. I'd encourage everybody to to tune in and. You know, I'm interested in looking at the dialogue, but we've been very transparent, you know, I I constantly. Inform the the council and the community how the budget that we put forward. Was fully supported by the by all five members of the school committee. And we believe the budget that we're putting forward addresses the needs. We also know these are challenging times. We all know what we experienced the last three votes. So, you know, there's nothing that I want to do more than work with the town, support the town manager. Support the town finance director. We're going to do whatever it takes to continue to build rapport. You know, I don't think unless you're in these shoes, you understand what it's like to operate during a pandemic, you know, I I I know that. I I worked with the superintendent very closely for many years. And I thought, ah, you know, I could do that job and I'd like to do that job and I thought I had really good training. And then you're in the position and then you're in a position where fighting for finances, while I know it's this way in. You know, many communities, but I still feel that this is, every day I've been here, it's been a fight. And then, by the way, we're in a pandemic, you know, and I think, you know, I I applaud this community. A lot of times people focus on just the negativity that they perceive, I I might say, but I am so proud of this community. You saw tonight, you know, what we've accomplished, you know, I don't know if you caught that our baseball team probably going to be number one in the state. They beat Hendrick in five to nothing, no slight task, you know? Again, when you start to see the colleges, the careers that our students are going to. You know, this year and you'll you'll see, you'll all be invited shortly to the graduation and sent out what awards nights are. So we've done a lot despite the challenges and, you know, I'm so proud of this community, so proud of the relationships we've built. And we want to continue that with with Mr. Sands, with Ms. Mills, you know, Harold's, you know, I I talk about. Mr. Marshawn being here, Harold's been here maybe seven weeks, you know? Give or take a week and we have a lot of new people miss cards, so there's a lot of moving parts, but. I'm hopeful that the the council puts forward a budget. We will have to revisit that budget. I believe that our next our next school committee meeting, because if it's a different, we'll have to come back and have a conversation and and vote on that, you know? You know, we, there's some savings tonight on paper at least with with the individuals, you know, because of layoffs. Our intent was to use that to offset our. Our fund balance that we utilize. We've heard that loud and clear. People don't like the fact that we're using the fund balance to move forward. However, you know, depending on what the council does, that'll that'll change that, you know? We would have, you know, significant several hundred thousand dollars to offset that. So tonight, but we'll have to see. So, you know. I plan on obviously watching and attending and and, you know, I again, I always encourage our school committee members, not that you need me. I'm in no position to tell you what to do, but to reach out to your counterparts. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we have been working closely and I believe our relationship's been transparent. And I'm looking forward to 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 supporting, you know, the town manager, the finance director and working with them. You know, it's going to be tough next year, so that that's what I wanted to say about the the town council budget. You know, again, I I appreciate their their collaboration and transparency. And then finally, and I know there's a lot of work going on. I know there was a meeting held last week around communication. You know, I truly believe last year just people were just burnt, you know, we were in a pandemic. You know, just the, you know, and this is my opinion, it was just a toxic, you know, conversation around budget and. But this year is different. You know, I have a meeting coming up with, I'll I'll be meeting with different union. You know, our our teachers, our our support personnel, trying to help get some get support around communicating. I know there's other meetings taking place. You know, we we definitely know that we need to focus, at least my focus is going to be on those individuals that I know care about this community, may not have come out before. But, you know, my feeling is the people that are going to say no are going to say no. And I've heard anecdotal conversations that people have had and whether it pertains to the schools or the the town. But I want to focus on those individuals that I do believe care about this community. I met a family outside our administration. Two or three days ago that they both, mom and dad both graduated from Coventry. They lived in Warwick, they just. They lived in Warwick. They just bought a house back in Coventry. I believe they have three children. You know, one's just going to start school. There are a lot of individuals like that. We have a lot of families that benefit from not only the schools, but the services. And are proud of this community and that's where I'm going to concentrate my effort on. You know, fighting is hard to get the message out and to get people engaged. You know, I have a meeting tomorrow with one of our, I believe he's on the call now, an individual Jay Longley, who's part of Envision Technologies. He's also a graduate from Coventry, lives in Coventry, is going to help us in terms of social media and getting messaging out. So. There are a lot of people I've met with PTA and had a PTA meeting yesterday. That I have the willingness from PTA, despite the pandemic, they haven't been able to get their meetings together like they'd like to. But they're all willing to identify. They know people that'll champion our cause, the cause for this community, you know, I look at, the last thing I'll say is that. You know, those of us that have been hired, those of us, those of you that have been elected, I believe that we truly are stewards for this community. And that we have a responsibility and. You know, I, I look forward to, you know, those 10, 15 days before June 10th. I look forward to those days of really pushing out a message and getting people aware and getting people to vote because that didn't happen last time. And, and no finger pointing, you know, we were all, I can only speak for myself. I was completely. Trying to focus on keeping people safe and getting schools reopened. You know, feeling like I was, you know, in quicksand when it came to the budget. Wanting to believe people were going to vote, but in my heart, I just felt people were burnt and, but I don't feel that way. I hope that, you know, I have so much faith in this community and, and those on, on, on the screen here and those listening and, and those in our schools, our staff. Our families. And, and I'm going to. Run with that. So I, I hope that, you know, that sentiment that. Many of us share and I do believe it'll make a difference. I do believe that we will see that people want to support. The good work that's happening and they want to support our youth. So. That's my take on this, this communication. You know, we're just starting to, to ramp it up right now. And I know there's other people on the screen that have been doing things. So, but I just wanted to. Talk, we spoke about, I spoke about it last week, the last committee meeting, and I, I wanted to speak about it again. Last thing I'll say, Saturday, there is a meeting greet for the town manager. We will have a table there. I'm going to have a few of the football players there with their jerseys on. I figure they'd be a much bigger draw than me. We're going to have a lot of materials to market to. CTE program. And I'm also going to, after this call, send an email to, to Mrs. Roberts to see if I can get some of the cheerleaders there too. So, you know, we're pulling this together last minute, but, you know, anyways, I just want to get that in there. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. So, Mr. Florio, do you have any questions or comments from Mr. Mr. Levis?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murray.
Yeah, I do have a couple. One is I want to thank Mr. Longley because it sounds like he's going to be helping out with social media. I want to thank the superintendent because it sounds like you're doing some, some legwork on trying to get things to move forward. I was at the communications meeting last week where we, you know, some of the select people were. Met to just discuss, you know, how do we get the word out? And the, and the truth is, you know, I come to terms with the fact that can't always convince somebody who's, who's a straight noble. But what I hope to encourage is a silent majority to come out. Who I believe are the parents, the working parents who come home every day, pay their taxes. And just want to move on with their life. And unfortunately, just don't go to the polls. So I'm hoping that my fellow members will do that, help. I know that we're looking to get signs on lawns. To get people out motivated. And I believe that is the responsibility of this committee to do that, my opinion. And go out and support the budget. The superintendent should not be alone in this. The administration should not be alone in this to carry the torch. We need to show our support to get this move forward if we really want it. We know the situation. I believe in the budget because I know the numbers and I know if we don't do it this year, it's going to be even worse next. And I know that I don't want to have a conversation again next year about sports or anything else. It was just six months ago. That we almost had entirely cut sports for the year. That football team that was on the field that I went and watched would have been vaporized. They wouldn't have been playing. The cheerleaders, all the activities would have been gone. So if we truly believe in operating schools and moving this district forward, we need to invest in it. We need to be out there doing whatever we can to talk to at least our neighbors. And that includes all the teachers, PTOs, PTAs. And every parent that's in the district who really believes in education. Again, all my opinion, but I know I will be out there. I'm taking tomorrow off to go help with that effort. And invite anybody on the committee to also do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
Um, no, no, no comments other than I, I will try my best to make it to. The meet and greet if I can. I'm supposed to be. Planning flags that day in preparation for Memorial Day, but. We'll see what I can, if I can muster an appearance. But other than that, thank you for the update.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I agree. Thank you, Mr. Levis for the update and I plan on going to the meet and greet and. I do agree with Mr. Murray and I think the rest of us agree that. It's important for all of us to go up and support this budget. And the only way it'll get passed will be a grassroots effort. And the folks that, you know, not enough of our supporters actually go out to the polls. And I think there's more of them, quite honestly, than the naysayers. So. I am going to be positive and work with my. My district two councilperson to do as much as we can in my district. And if we get enough signs out there and we get people excited about supporting us in both the town and, and the schools. Then I think we can get this budget passed. So I'm going to remain positive and I look forward to the Monday meeting as well to see what the town council actually votes. So are there any attendees that would like to make a comment about this particular subject?
We have no hands.
Okay, looks like this might be a record. For an early meeting. Could we have a motion to schedule the next meeting?
I'm chair, I make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the school committee be scheduled for Thursday, May 27, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
I second the motion.
I know, don't we need citizens' comments first?
Oh, I missed citizens' comments. I guess when I asked if there were any questions, I figured. You are 100% right, Mr. Levis. So agenda item number 12 is citizens' comments. Are there any comments from the citizens gathered?
Doesn't look like we have any takers.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And I believe we do have a motion on the floor for scheduling our next meeting and we have a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Martin.
Catherine Patnott.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Motion carries five to zero. And do we have a motion to adjourn? I believe I have 7:11.
I'm chair, make a motion that meeting be adjourned at 7:11 PM.
I second the motion. You're right, this is a record.
So if we could just have a hand raised on approval of that adjournment. Mr. Pearson, is your hand raised? Okay, I see five hands. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and thank you to the public for attending our meeting. Good night, everyone. See you soon. Okay, bye. Bye, bye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.